First off, I'd like to have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. One second, we have a flag that you can address right here. It doesn't show. One second. We're experimenting with something new. Be patient.
Yep, here it is.
I pledge allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which is stand one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Mine just showed, mine just came up.
My virtual flag, thanks.
Ours. Over here is, so, okay. So first, what I'd like to do is just go over some brief updates. Am I still getting some feedback? I'd like to just give everybody a COVID update, please. We had a meeting with the county on Monday. We have restarted now our weekly meetings with the county for COVID updates. As of Monday, there was 613 active cases, and we've been seeing double-digit rises every day. Thirty-nine hospitalizations and unfortunately 186 deaths. In the region, which is the Mid-Hudson region, there's, we're at 3.8%. That's for the Mid-Hudson region based on the seven-day average. And for Dutchess County, we're at 2.86% for the seven-day average. Just for everybody's awareness, there are metrics in place. And if you've been watching the governor's presentations, the metrics for, basically called, for entering into microcluster zones. Currently, Dutchess County does not have any microcluster zones. But the first, the first metric is yellow, which is the precautionary zone. That's if you have a seven-day rolling positively average above 3% for 10 days and 12 or more new daily cases per 100,000 residents on a seven-day average. The next is orange, which is the warning zone, which is a seven-day rolling average, seven-day rolling average above 4% for 10 days and 12 or more new cases per 100,000. And the last zone is the red zone, which is a seven-day rolling average of 5% for 10 days and 12% or more new cases. I just want to advise that everybody that the numbers are not going in the right direction, and I would like everybody to be safe and, and wear a mask. And due to this, because of the way we're going, I don't know if everybody saw that we are, we have now taken another step in Village Hall, where out of the abundance of caution and due to the recent rise in Dutchess County COVID cases, in-person meetings in Village Hall are hereby suspended. This restriction applies to all of our offices, the mayor, the village clerk, the water clerk, the treasurer, building planning and zoning. But the exception is for court, which is currently mandated to continue, and our village police department. All public meetings, including the village board, which is now this one, will be held remotely, as is the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. I'm really sorry that we got to take this measure, but to protect our village staff, we must take these precautions until further notice. We have, we've been set up, and we have learned a lot since March. We are capable of now running meetings remotely. We are capable of taking things by Dropbox or by a service window. So we still encourage everybody to take advantage of the, of contacting Village Hall when they need us. And all wastewater and water payments and court fees can still be paid at the Dropbox, right? But if you do need an in-person meeting, and it is an emergency meeting that you're required and you need, desperately need to teach somebody, we will arrange that for you. But it will be in the large room, our Village Hall meeting upstairs, where we can maintain social distancing. And obviously, if anybody attending Village Hall, they will be required to sign in as well as wear a mask and a glove. So thank you. Okay, the first topic on tonight's agenda is court consolidation. And I called for this because I wanted to kind of give the board and talk to the board directly about where I'm at and where my thinking is with the court consolidation. And after the board has a chance to discuss, we'll unmute everybody and we will take public comment on only the court consolidation. We will have public comment later at the end of the meeting on any other activities. So just, I want to give you just where I'm at, since our last meeting and our last forum that we had. And since vote, and since we voted to move towards consolidating the judicial operations within the town of Reinbeck, we've heard from many of you, and you're right. It is clear that we need to hear more and to continue engaging in the process with our residents before taking a final vote. And I have called this special meeting to ask the village, the Reinbeck Village Board, to consider a resolution for reconsideration. That would mean the board would table the consolidation plan and allow for further input from everyone and all of our stakeholders. We are also very mindful of the risks of holding an election in the middle of a pandemic. A lot has changed since September. A special election would not only be inexpensive to village taxpayers, but it could put poll workers and voters at risk. So with that, I am proposing that we form a village-town judicial task force to review the proposals that came out of the LeBurg Group on consolidation and work with Judge Sanchez, Judge Kane, and the staff, and have a series of public forums that will allow our residents to weigh in on the pros and cons of consolidating the courts. As always, we're always looking forward to hearing from you over the next coming months as we work together to really come up with a good policy. So with that, I'm going to open it up to discussion for village board members on their thoughts, recommendations, or changes.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, clearly, people seem to, there seems to need for more information to go out, more conversation to be had. People definitely felt like we were moving too quickly. So I think this is the best thing to slow down and help people understand what's going on.
Are we imagining that we would do more interaction with the public starting right away online, or are we waiting until hopefully the pandemic calms down so we can have in-person meetings or a working group with the public in person? It just seems like part of the challenge here is communicating with everyone in this restricted format, and then also just the timing here with the pandemic causing so much stress to everyone and people being pretty spread thin.
Vanessa, that's a good question. I think we need to take a pause, right? And to be able to take that pause, I'm not sure how long the pause should be, but I think we can use that time very effectively to form the task force. My thoughts on the task force are two from the village board, two from the town, and our judges and our staff, and possibly one from the county. The county has, you know, given us, given the town the grant. They have an interest in making sure that their money is being used wisely. And I believe we need to communicate and share all of our information with the county as well. So whether they want to participate or not, that would be up to them. But that was my thinking for the task force, but really to give it a pause. Get through this very difficult time, as you mentioned, not only with the pandemic, but with the holidays. And the holidays are going to be different for everybody this year. And I think I would like to give people time to really focus, to be with that and to handle the holiday time. So I'm suggesting January, by guess by default. And I don't know how long it's going to take, but I want to take the time to have the task force, to have the task force make a recommendation and engage with the public.
Okay, so the thinking is the task force hashes out a more detailed plan and ways, gets deeper into the weeds with pros and cons, and then there's a series of hopefully in-person public meetings.
Hopefully. Yep. I would like that. I hope we can get there.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I feel like since September, we've made an effort to do info sessions. But, you know, I forget exactly what the attendance was at those online info sessions, but it was, it was not every, not everyone in the village, certainly. So I feel like more opportunity for the public to learn about what this, what this really means would be good.
I've spoken to many people since then, and there's some that, you know, have heard, have heard the information either from us or from other sources. And there's some that have heard about it but have not heard any information. So, and if we're asking all of the village residents to vote, it would be nice if we could find a way to get information out to everybody and give that time.
So this means postponing any action effectively for two years. If, if, if we decide to take action, any court changes would, would be held off for two years because you can't end a jurist's term, elected jurist's term, which is fine, and that's, that's fine.
Yep, no, that's correct.
Yep.
Yep. And so this doesn't, it doesn't cancel anything, it just postpones it.
I think this makes a great deal of sense, honestly. We've gotten so many questions and so many people concerned with the process behind which we as a board made the decision, that I think taking our time to slow the process down and to really create a fulsome plan and to engage the public, I think, I think it makes a lot of sense. We've been talking as a board a lot about how to make sure that what we're doing is communicated better and is, you know, engaging the, you know, the residents and the citizens and the population in a more fulsome way with what we do on a day-to-day basis. And so the fact that a lot of people were concerned that, you know, this big thing was happening and there was no way to really talk about it. I'm, I, for one, am grateful that we're coming up with a way to, to allow that to happen. So I think this makes a lot of sense, Gary.
Thank you. I've reviewed this, just so everybody knows, I've been in consultation with legal over the last couple of weeks about this to verify, indeed do what we're doing, and we can, right? It is, it is, it is allowed, and we can also, the only restriction is that we have to do it within 15 days prior to the election. So the election we had tended, we had set for December 15th, we're within that 15-day period. So if the board chooses to want to take this action, we meet that standard.
Have you, or what have you discussed with the town in terms of setting up the, this board with their two?
I told, I told the town what I wanted to do.
Okay.
Okay. So that's there, and they're aware.
Speaking of the- I just, yeah, speaking of the town, I just wanted to let you know that I just let Josh Pulver into the meeting. And so Josh, just so you know, we're talking about the court consolidation question right now. And we're going to have a public comment period on that particular question, you know, shortly. So if you want to engage, you can engage then.
Okay. It sounds like in general, the board, the village board is, is to move forward. No other comments or discussion from the village board? I would like to open it up or-
I was gonna say, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, when would you want to do the working group here with the, two, you said, you posed two members for the village board, two members from the town board, and then staff. When would you want to get that going?
Yeah, so what I had mentioned previously was that I would like to get through the holiday period. I would also like to get through, hopefully, a turn in the events of the pandemic, that we can maybe have some meetings directly with, you know, the village board, the town board, and the judges to be able to do that. So by default, I was looking at January.
Okay. Then that would be a point, these people would be appointed by us. I, I don't really want to include the, the county in, in the working group. I mean, if we want people to come in and give input from the county, then of course, this, this working group could ask for information from the county. But I don't think they should sit with us and make these decisions. That's just my personal opinion.
I only included them because they provided the grant. If you don't want to include them, I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, I think we can have remote meetings on this particular question with a smaller group of people, you know, once, once the holidays are over and we begin to answer the questions that, in more detail, that a lot of people have.
Yeah. Yep.
And I, I agree with you, Brand. I think, you know, keeping the county informed and having them as a resource is one thing, but including them in the decision-making is a different issue, so. But I, I also get that, Gary, that the county has a vested interest in the answer to this question, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they haven't asked, just so you can, everybody knows, they have not asked to participate. So it was just a suggestion.
Yeah.
I mean, I like the idea, yeah, I'm fond of the idea.
Yeah, having them sort of involved in some way, but, yeah.
But they, they are intertwined to some degree, right? In terms of their bringing people to our courts? Who is this talking?
It's Josh.
It's Josh, I'm sorry. Hi, Josh. Sorry. Microsoft, whatever. Yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Lydia said hello, and I wasn't able to respond. I apologize.
No problem. Josh, could you, could you repeat your question? No, the county is involved to some degree because the sheriff's department brings people to our court systems. So there, there is some overlap.
Well, I think the question is whether they'll be consulted and talked to versus whether they have a, a voting position on the board. I mean, clearly, clearly, they need to be contacted and talked to. But it just depends upon whether the decision of the board, the two village people and the two town people, you know, does the county being included in that, in that decision? They should be consulted, but are they part of the final report writing? I think is really the question.
Or they could be a non-voting, they could be a non-voting member, right, as well? I think those details could be worked out. I don't know if that has to be worked out today, but we can discuss it as we form this task force.
Yeah, I think there's something to be said about, you know, taking a minute, getting, you know, making this decision today and then taking a minute, getting through at least Thanksgiving, and then we can talk to the town and figure out what the makeup of this task force is going to be, either in our next meeting in December or the one in January.
Yeah.
I think the charge, I'm sorry. Lydia, sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna say, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, and we have to spend a little time writing up the charge to the task force, what it's, what it's, you know, responsibilities and, and task is going to be. So that's really, if we're gonna have a, I think we're gonna have to, we have two, two things we have to do tonight. One is basically say we're, we're canceling the decision or whatever, then putting that in advance so that the, the vote is no longer is rendered moot. And the second one is figuring out how we're going to put together a task force. We have a little more time to figure out how to put together the task force.
And we have to get this message out to everybody.
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, we ready to open up for public comment on court consolidation? All right. Martina, could you?
Sure. So if anybody has any questions, just raise your hand, and then you can unmute yourself.
All right. If, if somebody comes in, we'll, we'll definitely allow them in. So I'd like to move on to the next step, which is the resolution itself. Okay? So I'll read the resolution. "The Village of Reinbeck Resolution of Reconsideration of Abolishing the Village Justice Court. Whereas by resolution dated September 21st, 2020, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Reinbeck resolved to abolish the Office of Village of Justice upon the expiration of the current term ending on March 31st, 2021. And whereas such resolution was subject to the requirements of a permissive referendum under village law, thereby thereafter a timely petition was filed and no objection having been prosecuted to the Supreme Court, the village board was required to set a special election for the voters to decide whether the Office of Village Justice should be abolished. And whereas it is evident that the issue has drawn interest from the residents of the Village of Reinbeck, and any such election apparently will encourage significant voter turnout, which during this current pandemic is something that the village board does not want to encourage. Therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the village law, section 9-906, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Reinbeck hereby reconsiders the resolution and does hereby repeal the September 21st, 2020 resolution abolishing the Village of, the Office of Village Justice, and therefore the proposition for its approval should not be submitted at such election."
I will second.
Okay. I'm going to do this by roll call for approval. Trustee Rick Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Brandt Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Vanessa Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Lydia Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Gary Bassett.
Aye.
All right. Resolution is passed, effective today, November 24th, 2020. Thank you all.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay. All right. Other business, we had some other very, some timely businesses that we want to discuss in addition while we had everybody together. The first thing on the agenda was the salt brine application. And I'm going to turn that over to Vanessa, because we've been working on getting this under, under wraps.
That's right. So, yeah, soon the winter storm season will be upon us. And so our idea was to try to get a quick and very low-cost, low-investment pilot going this winter to test out how treating our streets with salt brine could reduce our overall salt usage, saving us money and lessening our impact on our water quality and on our ecosystem. So we've been in discussions since earlier this fall with the town. And the town has moved forward with constructing their own brine applicator truck with a tank mounted on a truck and a sprayer bar. And they are also, in a very DIY spirit, constructing their own brine-making machine. But all of that is adding up to a bit of a pretty penny, about $12,000 to $15,000. And what we're looking at here in the village is really, we, we don't quite have the capacity to do the DIY engineering on our side at this moment. And we don't necessarily want to spend that chunk of change on an experimental pilot. So we've been looking into alternatives. And we have, we have a couple options that would, again, get us to our quick and low-cost scenarios. So one is to just contract with the town, if they would be up for hammering out an agreement, to have them treat our, our village streets. And we haven't discussed in any real detail what, what they would charge for that. And then the other option would be to go with a third-party contractor. And there's one in the, in the area who's given us a partial quote. So Gary, do you want to give the details of that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So what I've been doing, I've been researching for people, contractors that can do it. And I had a lead on two. One didn't come through. The other one is Dave's Tree Service, who also does snow plowing, takes care of the malls over in Kingston. He has a brine application truck already that he, that he had built two years ago, three years ago, something like that, to do these commercial businesses over in Kingston. He is willing to do this pilot for us. And what we were talking about for the pilot really was to try it once, right, Vanessa? Because one of the pieces of this component was having brine. And through the town, the town has arranged for, not only the town, but for the village to get one storm's worth of brine from the state DOT over an ulster, free of charge, right? So that would give us a one-trial test. Dave's Tree Service or Dave's Snow Plowing, however you want to do it, has agreed to do a test for us for that one application, free of charge. They would fill up their brine tank, but we would also have to fill up our tank here. And then to combine, to combine two tanks would probably be enough to do the 22-lane miles that we have here in the village with one brine application. So he wants to try it, we want to try it. It seemed like a good marriage to come together, because he can see how much it would be, how much it would cost, how well, because he's done parking lots, right? Never the village street. So he's in, he's game to do it free of charge for the first application, which will give him an idea if we wanted to contract it out to go forward. We also have, Vanessa, we also had a quote for buying one, correct?
That's right. Yes, we did. That's right. We looked into two different sources, rather than building our own DIY truck that would be able to spray, purchasing that contraption to fit on our truck from a company, we looked at and got a quote of about $6,000 to $7,000. And then John Fenton actually went to, to Mathies and asked what it would cost to actually build it custom for us here locally. And that was about the same, $6,000 to $7,000. So it just seemed like that's, I don't know, if we have this option to kind of test it out for free or for, you know, a couple times with minimal labor, and that, I, I feel like that might be the better, you know, less-risk option to try it out before investing in the equipment ourselves.
And we don't have options for brine after this, unless the town goes through with making their own brine application.
Yeah, the, the long-term plan is for the town to be the source of brine, to have a contraption, a mixer there at the town garage. Because they have the salt, we're their customer, we buy the salt. So we would be their customer in buying the brine. And so, you know, after the pilot, that's when I think we really look at, what is the intermunicipal agreement in terms of investing in a brine maker setup or access to filling up with our own village highway truck? But for the sake of this pilot, we're trying to do things a little, little quick and with minimal investment. Rick, do your, your hand up.
Is Dave's anticipating that they're going to get a contract to do the village? I mean, I-
He knows this is a trial. And if we want to contract it to him, he would, based on the trial, he may say he doesn't want to continue. He may say he does want to continue, but it's us stop. He knows it's a trial.
Okay. I mean, he may come up with a very attractive plan for us.
He may. I mean, he gave us, he did give us a ball, I'm going to call it a ballpark figure, just, you know, off the, just based on knowledge without knowing anything else.
Right.
And he would anticipate, you know- And he would anticipate, you know, approximately $90 an hour for him to do that application. Now, how long it takes them?
Right. And I think that's the attractive part of this test run is to see how long it actually takes. And therefore, how much the labor cost would be to contract it. And then we know at cost, brine is about 20 cents a gallon. But we don't know if Dave's Tree Service, if his brine source has a markup. Whereas, you know, we hope with the town, if they're making brine on site, we would be able to get, you know, get it at cost.
So throwing a little salt on the subject here. Just sounds like, Vanessa, this sounds like an opportunity for us to do the pilot. So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with working with Dave Tree Service for a test run for the perfect storm. Because it has to be a perfect storm to eat the brine. It doesn't apply to all storms. And if we get the perfect storm and it all works out to have Dave Tree Service do an application for us of brine.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
See, we have a hand raised from Susanna, our guest.
Hi. You know, you can't have a meeting without me being there. So my question to you, my question to you is, can you just explain a little bit? Because I missed this in the last meeting because I had a different meeting to go to. How does the brine benefit us? Does it mean less plowing? Will less snow be getting dumped in the Hudson River from our roads and that snow won't have as much salt? Is that the benefit?
So Susanna, thank you so much for asking. Love to, I love to talk brine. I'm actually putting together a webpage that will be going up shortly that will have more than you'd ever want to know about brine. But yeah, the long and short of it is that with proper application, pre-treating the streets before a snowfall, it, that run only uses about 25% of the salt that you would otherwise need for that run. And if it's done with, as Gary said, the perfect storm, you could actually prevent any need for follow-up rock salt treatment for that particular storm. But it's not a silver bullet. It's not, it doesn't mean no more rock salt. It just means cutting down on the amount of salt that we're using. And so the effect of that is less of that salt seeping into the road sides and then getting into our water system and in our ecosystem. So it's good for the environment and it also, over long-term, will reduce the contamination of the water sources. So it's, and it saves money because you are paying less for salt over the years, which is quite expensive.
There's also another savings. Savings is typically what happens when that storm arrives. Our highway department comes in at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. They go out with the salt trucks. And so we're paying them to, on an all-call service to come in and take care and treat our roads. An application of brine can be put down as much as 48 hours in advance during normal working hours and therefore not paying overtime for village staff to be able to come in.
Yeah. So I would really like to get that webpage up so that prior to the public seeing these tanks on trucks spraying our streets, that we could, we could announce to the village and the town this pilot and share that website, that webpage so people could learn more about why this is an important project and what it means for our health and safety. And, you know, allay any safety concerns in regards to road conditions.
And, you know, in this time of year, when we're trying to conserve money because of the pandemic, this seems like the perfect storm.
Yeah. So let's all pray for snow.
Can I ask a follow-up also? Vanessa, does it, how is it with ice? Because it seems like we've been getting a lot more, less real snow and more of that like icy crunchy type of precipitation in the winter.
Right, right. Yeah. Again, it's really meant to be a pre-treatment. So it sticks on the surface of the road such that when you get precipitation, you don't have that situation where, you know, the icy, the icy rain comes first, attaches to the road, and then you have to put rock salt on top to break it down. It really, it should be a barrier to the ice even forming and attaching to the road. What they call, I guess, hard pack or hard pan.
Hard pan. Vanessa, do you want to tell her about our conversation with the Adirondack region?
Yeah. We did have a meeting with, the gentleman's name is Dave Wick. And he is up in the Adirondacks and is part of a pilot project where they were noticing an alarming increase in salt contamination in Lake George. And as you know, they get a lot of snow up there. And they, through a lot of research, really saw that they need to reduce their road salt. So they've been using brine and other high-tech equipment, like special plows that contour to the shape of the road and so on, and really reduce their road salt. And it's expanded beyond just a few municipalities to now they have gone in on actually a mobile brine making unit that they all chipped in on and got some grants for shared services, I believe. And now that brine maker travels around, I think, 20 different towns so that they can share that resource and reduce their salt contamination in that, in the whole Adirondack, Lake George area.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be a little more clear on that. Josh has his hand raised. Josh, did you have a question? How about Rick? Do you have a question? Your hand is still raised.
I had a point in my, I'm muted. No, we did research with other communities and how they used it and how is effective and efficient. So it's not just us making it up, was my point.
Right, right. And you've probably noticed brine happening on highways because the state DOT uses it quite extensively. So yeah, it's, you know, if you get the, the only challenge for a municipality of our size is that it can, it can take some heavy-duty equipment. And that's why we're proceeding slow with this pilot to make sure that it's going to work for all the streets before we invest or pursue grants to try to invest. Okay. Oh, Gary, you're muted, sorry.
Okay. I'm muted, sorry. All right. So I'd like to take a vote on moving forward with the salt brine application using Dave's Tree Service for the initial trial period. Again, we'll do it by roll. Trustee Rick Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Brent Nunaker.
You're muted.
All right. There you go. Trustee Vanessa Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Lydia Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Gary Bassett. Aye. Okay. So we'll be in touch with Dave and try to work out the details. Thank you. Next, another weather-dependent item. Everybody knows and we talked very, a lot about our leaf truck at the last meeting. And we're finally getting caught up here in the village of Rhinebeck with leaves. Thankfully, we got the truck restored and up and running. And the crews have been working even on weekends to get us caught up. But having said that, the village of Red Hook ran into the exact same issue that we had. Their leaf truck basically fell apart. In terms of the way that it's going to cost them $20,000 to repair it and maybe a month for them to be able to get their leaf truck back up and running. So they've asked if we would lend them or contract our truck and a driver to the village of Rhine, to the village of Red Hook for approximately a week to go through the village and clean up their leaves. So I've been working with Mayor Blondell on this and Karen, who has determined a rate from the female equipment rental rate for a leaf truck, which was on the list, right Karen? And she also then did a review of the salary. So we have the driver cost covered, which also includes a medical, the union, retirement, et cetera. And it comes out to $110.20 per hour for us to contract our leaf truck and a driver to the village of Red Hook. In anticipation of doing this, Rich, our lawyer, who happens to be the village of Red Hook lawyer as well, Rich Olson, is drawing up an IMA to name us as additionally insured, right? So that we're covered while our truck is there and being used and whatever other boiler plates we need. And I'll go over that as soon as I get that. I'll send that out to the board if the board agrees to want to move forward to do this. So I'd like to make a motion that we charged the village of Red Hook $110.20 an hour for the use of our leaf truck and a driver, which would probably take approximately a week for them to do while they're up there. And I want to also mention, I went over this with DPW, John Fenton. And he's also in agreement that we can, once we get caught up here, we're more than willing to be able to cover that. So do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion?
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Is, obviously, we have to take care of our own needs first. So we need to be caught up and on, you know, all set up there. And then second, are they going to get it for a week solid? Or are we going to go back and forth? Or is it after we're done? What's the timing of this?
The timing, you know, so the timing, what I said, Rick, was after we're caught up. And John anticipates that we're going to be caught up by the, by next week with the leaves here in the village of Rhinebeck and that the truck would be free to use and the following week in the village of Red Hook. If it's not, then we do ours first, right? We get ours first. I do not know what the schedule is for the village of Red Hook, whether it's a contiguous every day or it's, other day, we'll work that out. You know, if we agree to want to do it to help them get caught up as well.
Okay. I mean, when we say caught up, do we mean done? Or do we mean just caught up so there's no giant leaves and we still have another sweep to do?
Rick, are we ever done?
No.
All right. So we're going to be caught up to a substantial point where we could stay ahead of it here. We're never done.
Right.
And we're going to keep going. And our normal brush and leaf pickup goes until first snow.
Right.
That's what we, that's our normal procedure. But if we have a gap, which John believes we will have a gap the following week, then we'll do it.
Okay. I mean, I'm all for, this kind of sharing is very good between municipalities.
Yeah.
They've helped us at other times. We should help them. It's the right thing to do.
Okay. No other discussion. I'm going to do another roll call. Oh, Vanessa, you raise your hand.
Sorry. Yeah. Sorry. One question. What happens if the leaf truck is damaged while Red Hook is using it and it needs to go back in the shop?
Yeah. So if it needs to go back in the shop and it's damaged because of debris that we picked up in there, they're going to have to cover the cost for the repair.
Okay. And that's in the IMA?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. Because if we pick up another large rock like happened here because of people combing, right? The brush and it damaged the propellers again. Yeah. That's the part of the IMA.
Okay.
Good question, though. Okay. Trustee Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy. Lydia?
Aye.
There you go. And, gotcha. Mayor Bassett. Aye. Okay. We will get in contact with them and I'll share the IMA with everybody. Okay. Next subject, community development block grant update. Vanessa, you're up again.
Yes. So after looking into the application and actually speaking with some folks about trying to pursue matching grants from local foundations, it became clear that we should withdraw our application, actually. Many of the local foundations are really focused right now on supporting the community with COVID. And it was clear with a total budget of about $325,000 to do that sidewalk and the cap of the community development block grant funds being, was it 100 or 150,000?
150.
150. We're going to have to come up with a substantial sum of money. and the, some other funding sources such as the state historical preservation funds, you know, since that, that neighborhood will now be in the new extension of the historic district. I looked into that. They're also on this CFA grant cycle where those grants don't open up until May and then they're due in July and then they're not even announced till December. And with the community development block grant, you have to, you actually, if you get that grant, you have to use it within the year. So the timing didn't work. And again, COVID just seems like there are more urgent priorities. So I would like to suggest that we would withdraw our application.
You got a motion?
Yeah.
My second. All right. Hearing no discussion. Again, take a roll call vote. Trustee Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Gary Bassett. Aye. Okay. We will be in touch with the county. I think this is a wise choice too. Because we do, if we submit the application and it's in the queue, it'll be, and if it gets allocated funding, when they could redirect that funding to somebody else, I think that's a good move on our part.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Other business. COVID testing payment. As everybody's aware, you know, two weeks ago, we had an issue with one of our employees testing positive. And as a result, we sent our whole highway staff to be tested. It brought up an interesting point in terms of payment for when the village is requiring or, you know, sending people to be tested for their safety as well as our safety as well. And so we sent, you know, the rest of the staff down to be tested. Some of them had used their insurance at that time. One did not have insurance and another person chose not to use their insurance. And for the reason being, you know, that comes off of their deductible, right? Which is what the village then covers. So the issue, the question comes up to is whether, what do we as a village want to do? I'm hoping not, but it's, the probabilities are against us that somebody will be, need to be tested again. And I really want to be prepared for this if that happens on what to do. We reached out to several agencies. Martina contacted Pulse MD, is Pulse MD, is it? Out of Poughkeepsie, who has been recommended by the county and set up by the county for essential workers. And that's where the police department has been going when they've had to go get tested. Fire department has been going, et cetera. And, you know, they just, they call up, you make an appointment, you go down. And it's felt like nothing got charged. And it's felt like nothing got charged to us. But in reality, when Martina followed up, they were charging all of their insurance policies to pay for that test, right? So the question becomes, what do we as a village want to do to pay for that? We did reimburse the two people who, on the previous test, who didn't get it covered by their insurance, we did reimburse them for that last test, just so everybody's aware. So I'm going to open up this discussion first before we make a motion.
What is the, our police use the SIS function, too? They use the same place?
Yes, they go to, yes, this is set up by the county for all essential services, all essential frontline workers.
And who's paying our police bills? Who's paying for those?
So, so far, their insurance have been charged, their own personal insurance has been charged.
Okay.
And we've had three people, three people so far be tested down at Pulse MD from the police department.
The police have been utilizing Pulse MD and our highway department actually went to emergency one. But it's essentially the same at each location.
How much is it?
$165 to $200 a test.
Thank you.
You gotta be kidding me, seriously?
What, yeah, what happened? What happened to free testing?
Country? Oh my God, we're in a pandemic, I'm going to ask $200 if I do have it. Sorry, sorry, I'm going to meet my.
Yeah, so I went over to Urgent Care in Kingston to be tested. And although my insurance paid for the test, I still had to pay for a physician assistant to check me out before I left. And I, it was an additional fee at Urgent, at Urgent Care. So if you go to Pulse MD or you go to, or the one Urgent Care in Hyde Park, you don't have to pay for that physician assistant.
Are these, I mean, I know that you can also get tested at CVS and Rite Aid. And I know at Rite Aid, it doesn't cost anything. Because I think they're doing it through a nationalized nonprofit. But I know that that takes time to schedule and sometimes you can't get on their schedule and all the rest of it. And so are these two options that you're talking about the only ones where you can go, like immediately because there's an immediate problem?
You can, you can only make an appointment that day and literally go that day. If you go to CVS, you have to go online and you register online. Then you get an appointment time and you have to drive to Poughkeepsie or whatever. Rite Aid is the same. And then you, it's all done outside. And same way at Pulse MD, you make an appointment, they come out to see you, but it's right there. There are two types of tests. Pulse MD gives you both tests. They give you what is called the rapid test, which you get the results within 30 minutes. And then you also get the PCR test, which you get the result in 24 hours. If you go to CVS or Rite Aid or one of the others, the turnaround time could be three to four days.
Got it.
Gary, it seems like this could be something that the county could help with for municipal folks. Is there a way to streamline it? Just, I don't know, there's probably no short-term solution, but if they're looking for ways to help.
Yeah, so this is what they, this is why they set up Pulse MD and Urgent Care in Hyde Park, for us to get immediate access. And just while we're on the subject, again, we need to clarification on what happens if somebody tests positive? I sent those flow charts to everybody, so you're aware. But also in terms of their, if they have sick time on the books, they're not to be charged sick time on the books. By federal law, they get up to 80 hours of time for quarantine time or whatever for COVID, which is not charged to them. And, and we pay, we pay, it's not, they don't get, they get paid for that time as well. And that's by federal standard of 80 hours.
Can we contract with Pulse?
No, Martina, I'm going to, I don't think, I think Martina asked that question.
I did, so I called over to Pulse MD and they said that we wouldn't be able to have something on their books to, to essentially, for them to invoice us. Because they send their tests out to a separate lab. And because they are not the same, they said that that lab would not be able to track our invoices.
Short answer, no.
And if we do decide to cover our employees' bills, they need to present us with a bill that we will then reimburse them for, that's the.
Yes, yeah, standard practice of filling out an invoice.
I think we should cover folks.
All right, is that a motion?
Certainly.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call. Trustee Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Bassett, aye. Okay, very good. I'm sure our employees will be very happy with that. The other thing I have on my agenda is a vacation buyout. Employee number 12 would like to request buy, a buyout of 148 hours of their accumulated vacation leave. Karen, you have validated that the, this is approved with our, covered with our book, correct? Can't hear you, but I see your head. All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we allow employee number 12 to buy out 148 hours of their accumulated vacation leave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Trustee Lewitt.
Aye.
Can't, sorry, before we vote, can I just ask a quick question on this?
Sure.
What is our policy on vacation buybacks? I mean, can people just accumulate as much as they want? Sorry, new kid question.
So the max that they can, that they can accumulate is 260 hours. And so after they get the 260 hours, they have to buy, if they have to buy out the rest of it. I definitely think that this part of the union contract should be looked at. And maybe, I, I think, maybe we can do a better job of encouraging them to use it so that they're not just holding on to that 260 hours every year and just buying out three, four, five, six weeks, so.
Yeah, I mean, for a couple of reasons. One, for more predictability on our finances. But frankly, more importantly, because people get a vacation for a reason. And, you know, I, I'm a firm believer that people should use their vacations.
I, I, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a lot of money.
Lydia, it also becomes also, become difficult also in, with such small staffs on managing the vacation as well. A lot of our employees have been here for a long time and they get quite a bit of vacation, right? So, you know, there's a trade-off here as well. But I agree with Karen, it's something we should look at into the, for the future. And contract is due next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, when does it expire?
Next year.
May 31st.
May 31st.
So we'll be negotiating that probably in the spring sometime? Okay. All right, thanks.
I forget. Who, we got to go back, we missed, who seconded this? I think it was Brandt, wasn't it? Was it you, Brandt?
Not this one, I don't think.
I did.
Yeah, Rick did, I think.
Rick did. All right, okay, roll call. Trustee Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Bassett, aye. Okay. All right, any other business?
I have a bid for the, for the Ultraviolet Building. Remember, we went out to bid, the public bid for, and we got a bid from Roth Brothers. They were the only people to respond, to do the project. And they bid at $99,950. So the first line item was basically the panels for the building and the doors, $87,950. And item two was for the ridge, which has like the, you know, the, it can open up and vent electronically and that's $12,000, for a total of $99,950. I have a letter from Ty and Bonn recommending that they're good. I can read you like a paragraph from it. Ty and Bonn reviewed the project reference list provided by Roth Brothers and contacted several references by telephone. Their performance with respect to quality, workmanship, work schedules on prior projects, submittal and change order processing, cooperation and overall satisfaction. References contacted have worked with Roth Brothers on projects ranging from less than $50,000 to over $2 million. They stated they were easy to work with. They had competent project management, provided a quality final product at fair cross, cost. All stated they would recommend them for subsequent projects. Based on the information provided, it appears Roth Brothers has the experience to perform the work. So I recommend that we accept this bid. $99,950 to do the, the panels at the Ultraviolet Building, at the wastewater treatment plant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. My only question, Brad, would be, when, you know, when was the timeframe?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I just wanted to get this going. I, I think they can do it in cold weather, but we, at least we'll get it done before the next fiscal year.
And are they replacing it with the same material?
Yeah, very similar, yeah. And custom doors on the ends.
And when was the last time this was replaced or?
Oh, it's been a while since I've looked into this, but this building was like from the 80s, I think. So it's never been, they've been patching it and, you know, the, the plastic is, the, the panels are getting brittle.
Yeah.
And they crack. It's just the, the material's fatiguing, so there's some really bad sections, but the whole thing needs to be redone, so.
Leaking badly.
And it's leaking bad, yeah, and the ultraviolet equipment needs to be protected. That's, that's the main thing inside the building, so.
Can this be handled inside the budget for the steward department?
Yeah, I mean, I spoke to Karen about this going in. Ty and Bonn's, actually, their total price, their OPCC, which they, is the opinion of probable construction cost was $114,000, so.
Oh, nice.
I guess we're making, I don't know, they said something about 90 grand, but I think that was just the, not including the ridge stuff, which is, so anyway.
Karen, you have a, Karen, you have a hand up?
Brandt, I just have one question. Did Ty and Bonn give us a cost for doing the engineering on it? Or is that going to be an open-ended?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I don't know, because I inherited this from, from, I didn't, I don't know how this got kicked off from design because I inherited this when it was at the bid phase, when I took over the wastewater facility.
Well, I, I think if we award, we did award the bid, but I think we should also go to Ty and Bonn and say, okay, you know the, the scope of the project and we need a cost from you for engineering for the entire project through inspection of the project. It's just nice to know it ahead of, ahead of time, or we're just going to be paying and paying and paying.
I know that for the stuff that I've had, you know, but I just didn't hear this at the, at the bid stage. So I don't, you know, like, I know, I've done that for the, for that mixer that we're going to bid on, you know, that we're going to go out to bid on at the, at the reservoir. But I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'd have to talk to Rossi about it, actually.
So, but, Brandon, there would be nothing stopping us from going to Ty and Bonn and asking them for a price for this. Independent of, independent of this, and we could then.
Yeah, that's, that's the next step. You know, if we want them for construction and contract management.
Yeah, well, there are engineers.
Yeah, it's, contract management, but for definitely construction management.
But I think we should know the total cost of engineering and they should stick to whatever they give us.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I've been doing it with the other projects.
Yeah.
So we, you know, we need to work on mission creep with our consultants, you know, because it gets expensive.
Yeah, I, I mean, that should even be part of the bid and, and have other engineers be able to bid on the, you know.
Yeah, I just don't know the history. I really don't.
Right. But at, at, at the minimum, we should at least get their cost to do this project, to see it through.
I will, yeah, I thought of that.
So, I think we're going to, it sounds like we're going to separate those two things.
Yeah.
One is the bid and the second, you bring the engineering, okay? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. We're going to do roll call. Trustee Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Bassett, aye. Very good. Okay. Any other business?
Yes.
Vanessa?
I have some more business. Our intern, who is shared with the town for our joint environmental committee, David Chernak, his internship is ending in December and we want to schedule his final presentation. I would like to do this as, as a special info session open to the public, really just focused on, on his work and on this project. And we'd like to do it December 17th at 7:00 PM. And you are, are welcome to come. It would be co-hosted with the town, so they would, yeah, they would have to agree to do it at the same time. Do I have to make a motion to?
I think so, that's just my spending money.
Okay, great.
So you'll schedule that and, and keep us informed.
Okay. Couple other things, Branch and I are still working on the environmental purchasing policy, so hopefully we'll bring that to the December board meeting, making good progress. With my, my Rhinebeck Responds hat on, it looks like we're going to try to do an updated survey to the, the businesses in the village, asking them about how they're doing regarding, you know, financially during COVID. And I was wondering if we could share the call for participant, participants through the village communication channels.
You mean, you want to, you want to announce it through our media? Is that what you mean?
Right, it would be announced primarily through Rhinebeck Responds. And then wondering if the village would share that announcement.
You didn't mean the meeting platform also, did you? Or, like, did you mean it would be a Teams meeting through this, through us, or kind of thing?
For David's internship?
Well, no, I know that part, yeah.
Rhinebeck Responds.
But with Rhinebeck Responds, it's a survey, so it's, it's, they sent one out, we sent one out, I think it was earlier in the summer. We had something like 60 businesses respond and it was really useful data to understand what was happening here locally with the small business community. And so we want to just run that back and see what's changed, what's new. And we're just looking for partners who will help spread the word so that we can try to get as many businesses to take it as possible.
Yeah, we, Vanessa, just as a practice, we have not been publicizing 501(c)(3) businesses because once you, we could end up doing that for a lot and we, you know, a lot of good businesses within the area that are, that are doing it. So my recommendation is that we should continue with that policy to not, you know, because how, where do you say no to somebody then, once you've started for a 501(c)(3)? And they're all good businesses.
I would, I would imagine that the only exception that we could sort of do on that is whether or not the information that Rhinebeck Responds gleaned helps the village formulate its own policies on how we continue to respond to the pandemic in terms of the central business district. In general, I agree with you, Gary, but I do wonder if in this particular moment, you know, gathering up this kind of information is, is helpful on multiple levels. I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if it. Um, I don't know the answer to that question, I don't know if it outweighs the cost of kind of, I, I don't know, but I was just sort of wondering, especially in terms of, you know, the outdoor, um, the outdoor policy that we just updated and, and released to the various community members, um, you know, if they're concerned about that and that's part of the Rhinebeck Response survey question, you know, if that's something that we should know about, I, 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 I don't know.
Yeah, we haven't seen the survey. And from my understanding, a lot of this is geared towards helping them turn how Rhinebeck Response gives grants as well, right, Vanessa?
Um, well, the survey does ask them how they're doing financially. Um, have, have they received any relief from their landlords in terms of rent? Have they taken advantage of P P P and, uh, and, uh, other sources of funding? So it, it does get into their finances. Um, you know, the Rhinebeck Response group has given out over a hundred thousand dollars in grants to the local businesses, um, and there's still more funding available. It's, but it's not meant to be, the survey itself is not meant to be an advertisement for anything in particular, it's really supposed to be, um, you know, an unbiased, um, check-in with our small businesses to see how they're doing. And, um, and I, I understand it sets a, a bit of a precedent with other community groups wanting the village government to share news and announcements. Um, but I think Lydia's point about how this could be really useful information, um, and it might even, even be useful for the village to share the results of the survey with the wider public, so that we have more of a uh, understanding, shared understanding, um, in our village and in Rhinebeck in general about what's happening during the pandemic with our, with our local economy.
Could we add some questions to the survey about outdoor dining?
Yeah, I think so.
If we could, uh, you know, to tangent, make a tangent off of what Lydia suggested, um, to get some more feedback on the outdoor dining and, you know, their thoughts about how, what worked, what didn't work, and what would they like to do going forward, maybe? I think then we, then I would say that's more beneficial to the village to understand.
Okay.
Yeah, and not just dining, but also retail, outdoor retail opportunities.
Yep.
Okay. Well, if everyone's good with that, then maybe Lydia and I, you, you and I can get together and talk about what survey question you'd like to add.
Yeah, happy to, happy to help.
Okay.
All right.
Um, I just wanted to mention really quick, I, I know we talked about it at the very beginning, but, um, town, uh, the village collector has a, has a box out in front of village hall. Um, the planning and zoning department, departments have gotten a couple of questions about with village hall being closed to the public, if there's gonna be some kind of ability for people to leave information for planning and zoning, short of sending it in via FedEx. Um, so I just wanted you to know that, uh, Ryan and John are looking into, you know, an outdoor drop box of some kind for planning and zoning that's bigger than the one that the tax collector has for, so it can fit plans and things like that. Um, it's ver, it's very much a moving target at the moment, I had the first phone call about it at four P M this afternoon. So I just wanted to let you know that we were thinking about how to make that communication a little bit easier, uh, during this moment.
Yes, great question, because I, I mean, I also asked that question before I did this. And what I was told was that everything today is being done digitally. So, I mean, I'm not against putting in, I'm just telling you, I'm not against another box, because way back in March, we discussed that. And when we shut down back then and the move was to push everything digitally, and what I've been told is that digital process is working, but I'm not against if we need to have some other way. I mean, definitely, they, they can bring plans to the service window and, and hand them right in, there's no need for a dropout box if, since we have a service window available as well.
Okay.
There's, oh, either way, all I'm saying is there's alternatives here to do this.
Okay, great, there.
Okay, any other business?
One last item, and maybe this could be on the agenda for next meeting. Um, we should have some sort of a kickoff where we're talking about potential projects and funding sources to discuss with Ty and Bond prior to going into budget season.
Yeah, well, Vanessa, this will be part of our budget process, which will kick off in February as well. We will make it a special agenda item for the budget process, is what we did, that's what we did last time. We gotta resurrect that document.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, um, I'm gonna open it up again for non-court consolidation public comment. Vanessa, do you want to leave? Pat or Kathleen?
You can go ahead, just unmute yourself.
Mayor Bassett, hi, it's Pat Evans.
Hi, Pat.
So I just, I don't know whether this was covered earlier or not, we, uh, it was very difficult to get on this call, just so everybody knows. The links that were in the email and the link that is on the village's webpage do not work. The only way that I was able to get onto this call was to go to the village Facebook page and click on the Teams icon that was on the village Facebook page.
Okay, I'll have to coordinate that with our website manager, because.
Just, just thought you should know that the links do not work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Susanna, did you, Susanna, you're on, did you have, you, you were on right and early, did you have any issues, just so we can understand?
I just put in the chat, um, that I use the Facebook page, I, I, uh, am on, since nothing else ever worked for me, I had, I'm, I'm using a Chromebook now to try and get on the meetings. And, um, so I'm too lazy to like type in my email onto the Chromebook, so I just sent it to the Facebook page. So I don't, I didn't try the, I didn't try the, um, the email link or the homepage link.
All right, Pat, thanks for sharing. This is our first attempt at doing this. Any other comment? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wait, what's out of here? All right, we're gonna, we're gonna do this by show of hands, all in favor, raise your hand. Lydia, I can't see your hand. Lydia.
Can you see it?
Oh, now we can. All right, thank you, everybody. Um, please, everybody have a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving uh, for whatever it is this year for twenty twenty. Uh, please make the best of it, but please be safe and, and spend time with family as best you can. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Jared. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.